All right. Call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We will start with our first agenda item would be the election of officers. So I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. Hall, to let you.
Do I have a motion for one of the chair?
I have nobody there.
Second. You go second, Mr. Kitt.
Second.
Hi. All right, well, thank you. Thank you all for that. And so we do need to elect a vice chair. And I would nominate, do we keep that same as Mr. Kitt? And so I nominate Mr. Kitt for the vice chair.
That's fair.
All right, we got a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like what? Motion carried, so we got that taken care of. All right, so our next order of business would be going over the removing of the residential solar from Article 7. An ordinance update, so I'll turn that back over to you.
All right. All right, thank you, Chair. So probably the easiest thing to do here is to go, you've got a document in your packet, and I had one on the table, hopefully there was enough for everybody, or at least a share, of the document titled Proposed Solar Ordinance Changes Summary 2023. So that's what we'll go through here. First thing, a timeline of, you know, what we're working on here. So the solar ordinance as it exists today was adopted in 2016, and that was the first time that the county really looked at solar in the ordinance. Most of you guys, all of you, I guess, were probably on the planning commission at the time. So February of this year, council was requested to impose a moratorium on solar farms for six months, so we could look at enhancing or changing the regulations for the solar farm. And so as that passed, council directed my office to begin working on updating the solar ordinance. So for the past roughly five months, John Gardner, who you're familiar with on the front row there, has helped us with our other planning and zoning over the years, and I have worked together on this, getting input from both citizens and solar companies. And so we'll go into kind of highlighting the changes here. So first item there is where solar farms are permitted. Currently, solar farms are only permitted either in the rural district or the industrial district. As you're aware, most of the lower part of the county is all rural district. So there are areas that are multi-use residential, and a couple other areas sprinkled in, but the large majority of everything below Big Beaver Creek is rural district. So really, where we're at now, the only solar that would be allowed above Big Beaver Creek would be in the industrial parks or in the industrial zoned areas. So obviously, our focus is more on the lower end of the county, which is where this would apply. Separation from other uses. Currently, in the ordinance, we have 500 feet from abutting residential properties, churches and schools, and 50 feet from the roadway. These setbacks currently can be waived by either the planning commission or council. The proposed, as you have it now, is 500 feet from the boundary of towns and platted subdivisions, 500 feet from any structure on the property of churches, schools, hospitals and residences measured as the distance between the security fence and the edge of the structure. And I don't know, I've edited this a bunch, it's supposed to say existing structures on the properties. So these two sections kind of work in tandem, so I want to read the next section, and then we'll come back to the two of them. So the next section is the fence setback. So there's a requirement, both by ordinance and by the National Electric Code, that these installations be protected by a security fence. Currently, there is not a setback requirement for the fence, it's just the initial setback from the solar panels above. So what is proposed is a minimum of 250-foot setback from the property line to the solar installation fencing. Now, keep in mind that above, it's 500 foot from a structure. So depending on where the structure is on the property, that 250 may be 500 feet to the fence, it's just going to depend on the layout. 150 feet setback from the road right away, so any road right away, it's 150 foot setback from the road. The 250-foot setback may be reduced to 75 feet with a waiver from the property owner. So if the adjacent property owner doesn't care, they can sign a waiver and easement and reduce that to 75 feet. There is no reduction of the 150-foot setback. Y'all good with that so far?
And maybe this ties back, I hadn't really thought about, because we had a 50-foot separation for roadways on the separation, but this 150-foot setback off the roadways would be greater such that it was, okay.
All right, the next item on there is interior roads, and this has to do with what the interior roads are constructed of. And so we've had several iterations of this, as we've gone through this. Originally, when we first started drafting it, we looked at trying to require that all roads within the solar farm not be gravel, that they just be dirt. So you don't have an issue in the event that the property is reclaimed as farmland, you're not trying to get gravel out. We weren't able to keep it that, because actually, the building codes require, and fire codes require, access to certain things. So there is going to be, the proposed is interior roads maintained with existing native soils, except gravel may be used to access critical equipment, facility, substation and inverter pads. Gravel drives must be removed and backfilled at decommissioning unless the landowner requests to leave it in place. If 30 years from now, or whatever time, the solar panels went away and the landowner decided, hey, I actually like the road, you know, certainly, they would be allowed to keep it.
They said the solar panels considered preferable equipment, wouldn't it be?
No, sir, not the solar panels themselves, this would just be the inverters in the field, the substation and the building that's related to it. So like all the rows, well, probably the easiest thing to reference is if you've driven down by tricameling, the little small solar field they've got there, it's all gravel. Everything under the solar panels, you wouldn't be allowed to do this, do that here. And there's other reasons why you wouldn't be allowed to do that, and we'll get to that in just a second. The next item is grading. And really, this was brought up in conversation as a result of a solar farm that was very poorly put in, where they just went in and stripped all the topsoil off, cleared everything down, and really impacted adjacent properties with runoff and things like that. And so there are currently no requirements related to grading. The proposed requirement is to limit 10% of the total site to be graded with an additional 10% of a disturbance allowed on a temporary basis while it's under construction. The ordinance language actually says that the topsoil has to be stockpiled and then put back out at completion of it before it's operational. All right, the top of the second page, first item is planting. So currently, there's nothing really that says what, and now we're talking about inside the fence. DNR and Clemson University, I don't know exactly the timeframe, sometime in the past few years, has developed a policy called the South Carolina Solar Habitat Act, it's actually passed at the state level. There's some guidance documents there, it's not a requirement at the state level, but this is language and it's in your packet at the back of the Proposed Solar Ordinance 2023, the application. And the documentation there is a requirement to meet, basically, everything inside the security fence has to be planted with habitat-friendly plantings. So native grasses and soils, they're not allowed to use a lot of different pesticides to control it, it's intended to be a habitat, a natural habitat in the area of the solar farm. So that is what we are proposing that is done inside of all the security fence. An earlier version of this, we just had planted with native grasses and soils, but we've, we're using, you know, a document that's already in place and has been vetted by people that are actually a lot smarter to me on what to do with that, so.
Do you know what this habitat is? I mean, is it flowers?
Flowers, natural grasses, pollinator habitats, small rodents, small animals, more, if you look in that document, at the back of that, kind of gives you an idea, there's an annual scorecard, or maybe it's biannual, but there's a scorecard they've got to go through, it gets inspected every so often, make sure it's got the cover and make sure they do.
So that's the maintain part, so if it.
Yes, sir. Next item is also kind of, we've all seen the, you know, not only just solar farms, but any development where they go in and the first thing to do is they clear everything, right, the property lines, cut everything down. So when we talk about, on the first page, the setback requirements, this is existing vegetation and setback areas. So when you lay it out on a drawing and you determine what the setbacks are all the way around the solar farm, if there's existing vegetation, you have to keep it and at least get to foot of that setback area. So you can't just go in there and clear it all. When we get the vegetation setback, I think it's likely that to meet the setback requirements, if there's more than 50, you're probably keeping the majority of the 150 to 250-foot setback. So that's something new that's not in there now. The next item down, wetlands. So wetlands are protected federally, but there is the ability to purchase credits for wetlands, remediate a wetland and buy credits, and this would not allow that, this would require that wetlands be protected. So you would not be able to invest the money in buying credits elsewhere and filling any of the wetlands. Next item is buffers. Currently, the current buffer requirement only requires screen adjacent to residential property only. Vegetated buffer is required between the fence and the property line, and there is no other language for buffer. So we really don't have any guidelines on what that buffer is required to be currently. The proposed ordinance buffer required on all sides of the development must be designed by a South Carolina Registered Landscape Architect. Irrigation's required for new plantings. We've got three different types of buffers proposed, and evidently, I wanted to make sure we irrigated it, because I've. Dead or diseased plants replaced within 60 days. The full buffer requirement is in your packet there that lists all of that. The first two options are kind of what we're used to seeing, except for a double staggered planted row of trees. The third option is the managed regrowth option originally, and I think, potentially, I think when I sent your document out, we hadn't updated that yet, but if you look, if you grab your Proposed Solar Ordinance 2023, for those of you in the audience that are following along, the two pictures, about halfway through that, there's alternative buffer approaches, there's a figure one and figure two. Originally, we had, so you've got a zone one, zone two and zone three. The piece that just got updated last night and this morning, based on input from local community, that first, so you see in zone two, you've got a three-gallon mix, 300 stems per acre. In zone one, it was originally that it needed to follow the same thing as zone two. If the zone one does not have 50 foot of existing vegetation, whatever there shall remain and the balance of it shall be revegetated the same as zone two. We've added the sentence, but with eight-foot material. Instead of the three-gallon material that's in the zone two, there's still the 300 stems per acre, but it's a requirement for it to be eight feet. So that's in the proposed buffer requirement. And so there's the three types of buffers. The first picture is using existing vegetation. The second picture, alternative buffer approach, is no existing vegetation present. Done the same thing here, zone one, 300 stems per acre, but it's an eight-foot minimum plant material when it's planted. So.
Plus they have to irrigate all that.
Yes.
Wow.
So, you know, quite a big increase in buffer requirements there. But, you know, like I said before, we've shared this with the community that's asked for it, we've shared it with the solar companies. Solar companies necessarily aren't happy with it, but they understand it, and I don't think there's any, there's pushback, but I don't think, I think it's a good compromise. I don't think I'm willing to back off on that. Next item down, stream side buffers, sorry. So streams are covered by DEHEC also for setback requirements and what you're allowed to do close to a stream. It's a lot less than 100 feet, though, so we've put in the 100-foot undisturbed buffer on both sides of a stream. That's new. Next item down.
Is there any kind of rule of thumb, or is that's all dependent on maps, on wetlands and streams, or?
So wetlands would be mapped, they are, yes, sir, either delineated by state or federal delineation.
But with a stream, more than likely, it's going to be a wetland too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A year-round stream is either going to be picked up as wetlands or hopefully in the flood maps, but, you know, small streams, you know, one that might run through a field that's dry part of the year, a lot of times, those are not picked up. But they would need to be identified in the plans. Decommissioning. Currently, we've got the decommissioning requirement required with performance guarantee, performance or surety bond, letter of credit or certified check, in the amount of $50,000 or 125% of an engineer's estimate of the decommissioning cost. Currently, as proposed, performance guarantee may only be a performance or surety bond, 125% of the engineered estimate, and it has to be updated every five years. You know, I think the last five years have shown us that costs can escalate, you know, pretty quick, and so, you know, 25% covering for inflation seems like a lot, but, you know, with 10% over the last two years, maybe it's not enough. So we're required to be updated every five years. We've added the removal of below-grade components. This is actually, one of the local community members brought that comment to us, and we thought it was good, so we've added that. So, you know, you can't just leave the buried wires, you know, underground, some of these things, you know, power lines, especially primary and larger secondary, are going to need to be at least three foot below ground, so not necessarily the easiest thing to dig up, and, you know, if you didn't know that you had to do it, you know, you might not know what's under there for years. Maximum.
I assume the engineer would have captured all that in his estimate. So that would be. Right.
Next item, maximum height, current is 20 feet. We're leaving it as proposed, the same for structures, this is not the, I should have maybe put some more clarification there, this is not the solar panels, this is the structures, holes, anything like that, it's typically maybe up higher than that, but everything else is going to be, you know, a high-power transmission line, not just four feet deep in the air, so that's what that's going to be. Next page, fencing type. Currently, we have six-foot with barbed wire. Some of the newer kind of, I guess, not technology, but plans out there, they make a wildlife-friendly fencing now. Basically, if you're used to seeing the bigger openings at the top of the fence and the smaller openings at the bottom, this is reversed to allow small animals, you know, deer is not going to be able to go through it, but a small animal, raccoon, rodents, things like that are going to be able to move back and forth between the fencing at the bottom. And we've removed the barbed wire component, I don't think anybody wants to ride down the barbed wire on top of the fence.
So that would be six-foot tall, though. I mean. How do you discourage people from climbing it, or? You can't.
You've got warnings on the fence, you know, it's hot, you know, it's dangerous. I mean, these things need to be treated like an electrical substation, I mean, they're generating electricity all the time. Now, they're not by themselves inherently dangerous as a panel, but, you know, they are producing electricity, so there is wiring, there's a lot of things out there that are dangerous. The National Electric Code covers a requirement of fencing, currently it's at six-foot, if it goes up, based on typically, so the National Electric Code, the thing about that, it's an NFPA code, it's written, its founding is in fire codes, NFPA is based in the fire codes, so a lot of these are looked at from a fire safety standpoint as well with electric codes.
Is there anything that we need to cover as far as posts or anything like that? Is this all on, like?
Talking about signage, you mean?
No, I'm talking about what is the post that hold up this fence? Is it wooden, or is it like chain link type?
It's not, it's a type of chain link, it's different than what you're used to, but it's galvanized post, it's not wooden.
Okay.
It's very, installation is very similar to a chain link fence, it's just a different style.
Okay, so the fabric is what's different, I got you, I got you.
Next item is power inverters and other sound-producing equipment. Currently, we don't have any regulation on this. We're proposing a minimum of 750 feet from any dwelling, including at least 100 feet of solar racking between the inverter and the fence. This is actually feedback from the solar industry explaining the travel of the sound, just that 750 feet by itself may not be enough, you know, on a clear, calm day, sound travels a long ways, but the addition of the 150, I mean, the 100 feet of racking disturbs the sound waves and actually reduces the sound quite a bit. So that is in there now as well.
So that is the power inverters and sound producers, so that would at least have to be interior of the field?
Yes, 750 feet from the property line and at least 100 feet inside of the panels. Some of these are much further in, but, you know, every project's going to be different, the location, you know, the proximity to equipment and the power line, all that's going to change, so there's a minimum requirement there. Next item is view protection. Currently, this is not really addressed. This also came from the community with some conservation concerns. Must protect the view from publicly accessible sites of significant public interest, such as public parks, rivers and other historic or natural resources. Originally, this, I believe, only included public parks or other historic resources. We were asked to include rivers and other natural resources. I think Combray River is probably something that would, you know, be something that would be significant, that would stand out to you on that. Insurance. Currently, there is not a requirement for any type of insurance related to this. What is proposed, once again, from community input, is the applicant must obtain sufficient liability insurance, including pollution limited liability, and I think the max for, I'd never heard of that until I was heard about that from them and did some research on that, to protect the adjacent properties from damage related to solar equipment. And the concept here is a hurricane or tornado comes through and picks up the solar farm and destroys it and dumps it on the neighbor's property. It may not just be cleanup, you know, it may be bits of metal and glass and everything like that in the field. I think one of the things that made this understandable to me was the concept of, I was told that, you know, you get a plastic bag in a cotton field and it gets up in the bale of cotton and it ruins the value of the cotton, so that's the same kind of thing here, not only for a house that gets, you know, somebody living in their residential property and gets this dumped on it, making sure that sufficient insurance is there to clean it up, but this, you know, would also cover crop damage, things like that that would happen from this. And that is the end of the summary of proposed changes. Questions, other questions from you guys on that? If not, I would say that this would be a good time to allow the public to make any comments, probably do it similar to we do council, I didn't post it, but we try to limit the comments to three minutes and 30 minutes total, try to do something like that. I know we've got communities, several of you are here in support of each other, if you want to stand up and say, everybody else stand up that's wanting to say the same thing I am. I mentioned before the meeting, in your packets, you've got some emailed statements. I had, I think, four more come in today, so you don't have them all in your packet, I've got them here, we'll put them in the record there. Email objections, we got Helen Lafitte, Bobby Temple, Mary Pittman, John Hane, Lisa Peterkin, Shiva Flood, Julia Wolf, Janet Eccles and Luther Wanamaker. And I checked my emails, I think I got all the emails. I'll check them again and add them to the public record if I did get any, I checked this before I came in here, I think I got all the emails that came to me. And so with that, if you'd like to take questions or comments, we can do that.
I guess before we do that, anybody have any questions, Mr. Hall, before we open it up to his presentation? Y'all good? All right, well, what's that? Did you say something, Mr. Kitt?
No, I have to say.
Okay. All right, well, we'll open it up to anyone that would like to address the planning commission. If you can come up and state your name, and we'll give you three minutes.
I guess I'm first, because I sat in front, John Litten. I've got three points. The first two are kind of related, so I'll start there. What this does is it starts with the proposition that every single rural property is appropriate for a solar power plant. That can't be the case, to me. There are multiple ways to bring the community back into the discussion after the new ordinance is passed. One way to make it where every property is not available for this is to do a study and do an overlay district. That's what's been done with other invasive uses like this, there are problems in other communities, such as hotels in Charleston. You can't just have a commercial property make a hotel, you have to be in the accommodations overlay district. And staff, you've been commented that the lower half of the county is pretty much all up for grabs now, you could have solar power plant or solar power plant. Some are probably appropriate and could be identified, and I think that overlay district is something this group could do to send it back to staff to study an appropriate overlay. The second, which is similar, is I think this should be a special exception, not a conditional use. What this ordinance is as drafted, is it's a checklist for the solar companies. They meet that checklist, they get their solar power plant, the community's out of it. Special exception requires them to go to the BZA, same checklist, but it recognizes that every piece of property is different, and that every property line is different, everybody's use is different, and it allows the BZA to balance those interests, it allows the, requires that the solar companies would deal with their neighbors. The way this is set up is a conditional use, it allows them to deal with staff, which very well-meaning, I'm sure, but, you know, staff's got a checklist and they figure out a way to meet the checklist, it's the heck with the neighbors. The third point is a more basic, less conceptual point, it's about the buffers or the plantings. The height restriction in the draft ordinance is 20 feet for the solar power plant instrument. The height restriction in the draft ordinance is 20 feet for the solar power plant instrument tally. And the required buffer is eight feet tall. And this is one of those, I don't have to be an engineer to know that water runs downhill. You know, I know that if I'm looking at something at eight feet and there's something 20 feet behind it, I'm going to be able to see it, and it's totally ineffective. Those two numbers should at least be the same as each other, if not inverted, so that the buffer would actually be effective. And just to demonstrate the point, this is the kind of thing that makes people nervous that after this is passed, we're out of the process as neighbors, is I look at these figures here that are part of the draft ordinance. And you've got the trees over here that are eight feet, and then you've got grasses that are, you know, three feet, maybe about that tall. And then all the solar instrumentality is two feet on this figure. I haven't seen any solar farms where the panels are that far off the ground. What this is going to look like is these solar panels are going to be right up here, and I'm going to be right there. And that's something that I would like this group to consider. And in the interest of time, I'll use the suggestion to the extent anybody has recently standing up to read the grant. Thank you all for listening.
I'm Francis Mack. I've lived in Calvin County 73 years, grew up in Sandy Run, live in Fort Mott. And as I told someone earlier today, we live in Fort Mott because we want to, you know, we love the county, love the area, and we just appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to us and receive our input. I've got basically two points, and they're more technical points than anything. And just appreciate the responsiveness so far. The first, on the reclamation cost and the requirement for a performance bond. I was, as an engineer and an attorney, involved with construction projects for 40 years. And I can think of very few where there was a cost estimate made, what something was going to cost a year down the road. Maybe two out of 50 would be close. You know, you just can't really project the cost. Simply requiring a cash bond of some sort, letter of credit, whatever, for some fixed amount to try to cover the cost of something 30 years from now, that's just exercising wishful thinking. So having a performance bond where an insurance company will be on the hook to be sure the reclamation occurs the way it's supposed to, then the upside risk is on the insurance company rather than if you've only required a cash bond, it's on the county. So that's, I think, important. And I was very pleased to see the changes in the language to increase that some. The second point on the insurance, and again, the pollution coverage is important. Most liability policies specifically exclude pollution claims. Having the requirement and the insurance industry term is pollution legal liability. That's the extra coverage that the solar company would have to get. But that's important for neighboring landowners, but also for the landowner where the project is located. If there is pollution from the panels onto the ground, then that would need to be cleaned up at some point. And if there's no liability insurance to cover that, then it's the landowner's problem. And that can be a very big problem. So the term pollution legal liability, that's the term of art in the insurance industry. So those are the two kind of technical points. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of these issues. It's very much of interest and concern to the community. And our hope and goal is to protect the community in the long run. Because this is not a go ahead and do it, and then a year from now, everything is over, it's gone away. We're talking 30 years down the road, which I think back the changes in my life over the past 30 years. Who knows what it's going to be like from now? Thank you.
So, Mr. Mack, before you leave, the insurance that we have included, it sounded like we have covered what you had asked for, but it sounded like you were supporting that, but did we miss something there?
It's just the terminology. Pollution legal liability is the industry term.
So we have pollution limited liability, that's not, that's not the correct term? Is that what you're saying?
I think we actually have the correct term updated, but I better do that just to make sure.
Okay, all right. And then we do also have the five years that we would be, they would have to update, so is...
And the other point Mr. Mack brought was about the performance guarantee type. So that's, we've looked at that. We've actually had the county attorney making sure that we're covered on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Hello. I'm Brett Haber from Fort Mott. Thank you all for letting me in. I'd like to talk about some of the proposed setbacks, the minimums. The first on this first page is the separation from other uses. 500 feet is good, that's measured from structure, I'd say. And we feel like, and this is from schools, churches, hospitals, residents. And we feel like this should be measured from the property line. All these places, the churches, the schools, residents, where our children play, playgrounds, ball fields, that sort of stuff. I don't know what kind of poison stuff can come out of these things, but I'm looking at another ordinance from Edgway County. They have all of their firemen trained in hazmat training for solar farms. Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, you mentioned to me one time that you were going to suggest that our fire department volunteer to any horn there if there's a case of fire. We had a conversation.
Yes. Yeah, the solar companies, yeah, the solar companies consider it, they're not worried about a fire burning inside. They want to protect the outside. They would rather their staff come handle it, they're required to have a 24-hour notice.
They're not worried about smoke, fumes coming off those burning panels?
So the panels, in order for the metal and the glass on the panels to burn, they're not burning. The ground is burning underneath of them. These are not typically combustible materials.
So the firemen wouldn't need this hazmat training?
The firemen will have hazmat training, it actually is provided, they've already gone through it. So our firefighters have been trained, we have four solar farms spread across the county already, so our firefighters are already trained to do it that.
We still feel like the 500 feet should be measured from the property, where the ball fields and such things are, the schools and residents, where our children play. On second, defense setbacks, amount of 250 feet. And for the same reason, we'd like for it to go to 300 feet, which is not unheard of in some other ordinances in state. And that being for the same reason. I would also try to make these solar farms a little more open. Solar farms are very open. You don't hear anybody say, ride down the road, say, what a beautiful solar farm I just went by. You can't talk about that now, that beautiful eagle's arrived by, pine trees, a pasture. But you don't hear anybody say, what a beautiful solar farm. They have a couple people, I can think of. But we were proposed to please put these at 300 feet. And some of the counties have 300-foot buffer around their tire circumference, included highways. I think something should be considered on that also, just to hide these. Do have an accident with smoke running out, protect a little bit, and water runoff, maybe a little more time, let the water soak in the ground before getting on a neighbor's property. These landowners have rights to use their land as they see fit, but when it affects our neighbors, either the value of the property, it's safe to the children, something there that really is bigger, so, you know, thank you all for that.
My name's Bobby Temple. I'm a 23-year resident of Fort Mott, Calvin County. First, I'd like to thank planning commission and county council and you, Richard, for the guidance that you've offered in this whole process. We appreciate it, we couldn't voice our opinions without it. I'm happy to see these suggestions for changes. One thing I would like some more clarification about is the fencing specification itself. Fences in solar farms and other places are often much more offensive visually than what they're trying to shield. Especially if they're not put up properly. It doesn't say whether these fences have a top rail or a bottom rail, what's the gauge of the fabric, what's the gauge of the post, are they anchored in concrete? And all those things affect cost. So obviously, if you want to save money, you're going to eliminate a lot of them. So there's reference here to wildlife threatened fence per National Electric Code requirements. I'm not familiar with a fence design that comes from National Electric Code, but...
Well, there is not a design, it's a minimum protection, it's a safety measure?
Yeah.
So the National Electric Code has not wildlife fencing requirements. Wildlife fencing is not part of the electric code. The electric code has minimum fencing requirements as security to same type of fencing requirements as you'd have around, you know, a substation or something like that. There's different requirements for different installations.
Right. And would have very little to do with visual impact, I would think.
It's safety, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's more safety. Can we get in our ordinance some kind of a specification or guideline about what it's going to look like? Can we get some kind of coating, some kind of, use a vinyl coating, even a painted coating, aluminum, galvanized metal? And the whole solar farm installation is all galvanized metal, so can we get something to offset that? We could, if we just publish a specification, that would be satisfactory, is what I'm asking for.
We can certainly look at that, yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, my name is Joey Wiles. Excuse me. I have a 1,400-acre farm in Fort Mott. My neighbors, my friends, don't completely agree with what we are thinking to do with our property. We began working almost a year ago to explore how this might happen, including work with my mom, when she was still alive with us. The first thing that happened when solar companies came to us was they said, oh, well, we're going to follow Calvin County's solar ordinance. And when I looked that up, I realized it really was not adequate. So I'm very appreciative for the work that you've done, staff has done, the research has been done to create this document to begin making it more robust so that we don't see these, that they're safe, that it's a way, it can be a part of the community and enhance it and not mar it in some terrible way. And we can contribute to making a cleaner planet. That's important, as well as growing crops and everything else that we need to do for our world as well. We have negotiated and worked with a company called EDF Renewables. Over the last year, most of our provisions actually exceed much of what is in this new ordinance. The double roads and plantings, the safety issues and so forth. But we are happy to see that this is moving forward and that this is a way to allow us to talk about what the concerns are, what the safety factors are, and how we can try to mitigate those to make the county and our community a safe place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on in.
Thank you, guys. I didn't come prepared to speak, but I feel like I need to. My name is Dukes Isgitt. I'm a forester from Fort Mountain. This, what's going on here affects everybody here. I'm in between a rock and a hard place. Julian's my cousin. I grew up on that farm and appreciate it and love it as much as anybody in the world. We've got farmers here today that may lose part of their liability because of the solar farms. I had an opportunity to talk to the solar people, they asked me questions, I asked them questions, and kind of found out they knew a little bit more about some of the things, and I know a little more than they're trying to tell. And I'm not saying there's anything going on there, but I do a lot of commercial herbicide application. I am a forester. The buffer's on the wetland zones and the streamside management areas. In forestry, we, you know, we go by the best management practices with the South Carolina Forestry Commission. And that is regulated, no doubt. So those need to be protected. I like that. I like what Brett said about the 300 feet minimum from the property lines. That's just me, and I'm saying I'm affected, because there's two gentlemen in here tonight, they're trying to possibly do this. And don't get me wrong, I understand private property rights versus public opinion. I know that from my own business, and I don't want to keep anything from them, and I want them to prosper as much as they can. But where my house is, will be three sides of it, solar farms. Where my property is, I would say at least two sides, to not only include the road that I've got to drive through to get to my property. So I hope that maybe as this planning commission goes on, how it affects, you know, people like me who is directly involved. Every piece of property I have is involved. And I'm sure everything can be worked out, but I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, that there are people like me who's in the middle of it, one way or the other. But we appreciate what you guys have done so far with it, and where we go from here, you know, good things hopefully will happen. And like I say, I sprayed that substation that truck in, so I know what all is involved. I know how dangerous they are, I know about how much electricity they produce, we won't discuss that today, but that's a whole different thing. Don't know what else to say, other than I'm affected in a big way, and so is everybody else here, and that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Last call. Anybody else?
All right. I really appreciate the chance to talk. I'm the oldest guy here, I think, and I've been around for quite a few years. And I'm in Fort Mott, I have the, I do have 175 acres right next to Union Place. And my father, Julian's father, were extremely close friends. And they cooperated if I insulted my land, we worked together always. My major point is I want at least a 250-foot buffer. That, anything less than that would be terrible. And that's my major. Thank you.
May I add something to that?
Yeah.
You're talking about these wildlife buffers, or like buffers from the fence to the roof? Everybody keeps talking about the honeybees and the flowers and all this. How about the deer and the hogs? They can't go through the fence, because clearly they can't be allowed in the, in the fences, they'll tear up the solar farms. But if you allow 250 feet, and I'm coming from a wildlife guy in another court there. But if you allow two hundred fifty feet, and I'm coming from a wildlife guy, another question, if you allow two hundred fifty feet, maybe three hundred feet, as Rhett suggested, how many times have you seen deer at the deer, I call it deer, deer prison, whatever you want to call it? They run across the road, they can't get across the fence to get hit the road, right? If you give them two hundred fifty feet to three hundred feet, how do they actually have a corridor? Especially if you have a well-maintained, well-planted buffer, that they can safely cross and keep moving and keep hunting, which is also, uh, an effect on this area, this buffer.
Thank you, that's everybody?
Yep.
So, Richard, I, I mean, just looping back to the beginning, the...
Yes, sir.
The, the buffer and the height of the trees and, um, I was, you know, thinking about the, we have a statement in here about the maximum height of twenty feet. And can you go back over what, what's twenty feet tall in the, was? Because, I mean, you are right, our picture shows the panels to be a lot smaller than they are, and, and...
Picture's not exactly to scale.
But, but do we have any kind of figures on, an idea of what a panel is at the peak? I mean, are we talking ten feet tall?
The, the panels themselves vary, and it kind of depends on what type of panel it is. Um, if you've got a fixed panel, or you have a rotating panel, certain parts of the day, it may, it may be higher. Um, you know, we can, I don't have all of that, I don't have that data in front of me. It's possible that the panels themselves could be limited to a lower height. I have to do some additional checking on that. You know, obviously, utility poles, buildings, things like that are going to be limited, are going to be harder to limit, you know, beyond reason, but we can certainly look at, um, you know, affecting potential, you know, maybe, maybe fifteen foot is high enough for the panel. I think that with the buffers, you know, two hundred and fifty foot, we, you know, we looked at, we started out, you know, somewhere much smaller, we got, got to two hundred and fifty foot on the fence, five hundred foot from any, you know, existing structure on the property, I think we tried to balance that. The two hundred and fifty foot, you know, setback from the fence, I think, as the gentleman mentioned, I, I wasn't thinking about the wildlife quarter for that specifically, but I think it would be enough for that. Um, but the buffers themselves, you know, they're, they're going to be continually growing, you know?
Well, they're starting out at eight feet tall anyway, a minimum, and, you know, average person only being six feet tall, that kind of blocks you.
Yeah, I think that it's obviously not going to be instant.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, you know, we had a rec, you know, we had a request to go to twenty feet tall, and just checking, it, it's really unreasonable to try to plant twenty-foot tall trees. From, from research, they don't transplant as well as a smaller tree anyway, they're more likely to go into shock, especially at the scale that we're talking about doing. You know, sometimes miles of fence line, because this is a, now required to be a buffer on the entire perimeter of, of this. Also required to be planted, not with a buffer, but with natural grasses and everything on the entire inside of it.
And we're irrigating it, so it's going to naturally grow faster.
The, the grasses and stuff aren't going to be irrigated under the panels. The buffers would be irrigated for the pan, for plants, yes, just to make sure we're on the same page. But I, I can, I will certainly look at trying to find out what the, I guess, what the logical minimum height that, or maximum height that we can impose on a solar panel without saying that you can't do them, you know? I would imagine that, you know, five feet or eight feet is not reasonable to, to be able to work. But, you know, is it fifteen feet, you know, something like that, is that, is that more amenable? We'll look at that, I can't give you an answer on that right now.
I mean, do we have anything, and maybe this does speak to it, any kind of spacing such that we know that...
So the two, the two buffer types are double roads, spacing appropriately, it's got to be designed by a landscape architect.
Okay.
So that, all, all three types of buffer has to be designed by a landscape architect.
With the vision that it would be a, a...
An appropriate...
Appropriate.
Planning, yes.
Okay. Do you have something, Rhett?
Yeah, and Richard has said this, now my, this, what size of trees will be at the initial plan?
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight feet.
Yes, sir.
The initial plan?
Yes.
Yeah, minimum of eight feet tall.
One of, one of them, in an earlier iteration, in the managed regrowth buffer, it was smaller, three gallons. We were asked to make that bigger too, so we, we raised that to eight feet minimum also.
Well, I do applaud staff for all this work, because what we started with, and whenever you said ninety-six, or however long ago it was...
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, yeah.
And I, and I think, real quick, let me...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Linton, on, on the first one, so the overlay district. Um, so, when we get done with this portion, we're going to continue, we're going to have a presentation for Mr. Gardner on continuing on the comprehensive plan process. And, and for those that don't know, when we finish with the comprehensive plan process, we move to zoning. And, yes, the, the, the rest of the county is not, in my mind, is not going to be as it is now zoned. Basically, it's a free-for-all on most things in the lower part of the county. And, and for years, i- i- and really, you have to be careful what you ask for, because when we impose zoning, we're taking away property rights. And when we establish zoning in the lower part of the county, it is going to limit what you can do. But when we do that, we're going to try to balance the best interest of everything as we go through that as well. But, yeah, the, the idea that everywhere in the county minus areas on the lake and some spotted multi-use residential would be appropriate is, isn't going to be the case, and, and I agree, it doesn't need to be that way. There are other limiting factors to solar, at least currently. Um, you know, technology's going to change, right now, they need to be, they need to have proximity to high-power transmission lines, unfortunately. For those that don't want it, Fort Mott has a lot of open land, and at least three high-power transmission lines running through it. Many other parts of the county would never be able to have this conversation, because they don't have the infrastructure there from the utility companies, um, and they don't have the large, open land parcels that, that make this a good fit, um, you know, for the Fort Mott area. But as we get done, hopefully in the next six to nine months on the comprehensive plan, um, that'll be the next step, we go into zoning on that. I don't, with the way that, that solar works, uh, there is some movement at the state level to enact state-level zoning, uh, actually introduced by our local representative, uh, Russ Lott, uh, has, has been involved in that, uh, as well. And so, I, I think there's still other moving parts. You know, I know that this is not everything that everybody would want. They say the best compromise means nobody's happy. Um, I think that it's clear that what we've got, you look from one page to, to what we've got, I, I think we've developed a, a pretty good compromise. And in my opinion, it's slanted more to protect around than it is in many areas for the solar farm. And, and I have to say thank you, especially Mr. and Ms. Mack, I don't want to diminish anybody else's input, I think they kind of headed up that, but, um, I don't know, probably four or five meetings with, with the Fort Mott group, at least over this timeframe. I learned a lot, um, from them doing that, so I do appreciate that. And, and it was, was a big help as we tried to craft this document.
Okay. So, do you need any action from us at this point, or is this...
Yes, sir, we would be looking for you to either, now, I, I would like to, to probably recommend that we take the, the comments, um, I, I feel like we've, you know, three hundred foot buffer was mentioned, a five hundred foot buffer from the boundary was mentioned. I think we came up with a good compromise on that, with the five hundred foot from the structure and the two fifty from the fence. Originally, we had a hundred and fifty to the fence, we, we raised that to two fifty.
And that fence is two fifty off the property line?
Off the property line, yes, sir.
Right, okay.
So, um, with the exception of looking at the, the limiting height on the solar panels, and that's something that certainly could be done between now and, and when this does go to council. You know, staff, I, I feel pretty comfortable that I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it is. So we would be looking for you to make a recommendation to council to approve it, make a recommendation to council to disapprove it, or make a recommendation to council to approve it with amendments. Um, I, I think that the, talking about the solar panels themselves would be something that I think that we limit that to the lowest height reasonable. That doesn't mean you can't do it at all, would, would, I think, be a good recommendation for the planning commission to, to give to council to do.
Yeah, I agree. Um, the, I mean, the eight-foot first buffer, I think, you know, that is a good start and to getting, getting there, and I'm not... I'm just trying to think about some of the fields I've looked at, how tall those, hadn't walked out into one to know what they look like, I mean, how tall they are, so. Seems like the ones in Cameron, they didn't seem excessively tall, I mean, they didn't, I think we went to one, John, didn't we go to one, to one right outside of Cameron, initially? And it, it didn't seem excessively tall, but, you know, the...
Say, you know, it may be the language is that, um, it, technology changes, and so, you know, maybe the language is, we find out what really the, the minimum industry height is that they function, and the language is that solar panels themselves are only be allowed to be installed at the minimum functional height, something like that. You know, when you, sometimes when you nail something down too tightly, and technology changes, you, you can lose on both sides. You can either have not gone far enough, or have gone too far. But we can certainly look at limiting it to the, to the minimum or maximum, that minimum height required to function.
Right, and given that the moratorium, my calculator, is nearing the end here. So if we do not do something, we could be stuck with what we have, and it's much, much...
You would either have to extend the moratorium, which I don't know that there's a desire to do so, I'm not speaking for council.
Right, right.
But the, you know, certainly, there's going to be three public meetings at council, and by three public hearings on, to council, um, because of that. So, um, still time for council to make any tweaks, although, like I say, I, I think, with the exception of just looking at the height of the solar panels, I, I think we've done a pretty good compromise.
And I agree, and, I mean, I think it's important for us to, to, um, probably move forward to keep all this hard work that y'all have done to, to, um, get that in, in place here very soon, such that we, we're not limited to what we had, because it was not near what, what we have now, so, what's been presented, so. So, do we have a motion for approval of this article with the ability for amendments between now and the time that it goes to council to address some of these concerns that we've heard tonight?
I still move.
Seven.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, motion carried. We do appreciate y'all's, y'all's input, and we will continue to look at this, so. All right, next item was replacing, is that right, or is that...
That's what we covered, we, we covered the first two. So now it's time, um, well, the, they all three go together, the first three, so we're at the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
John, I could not find the clicker, so I'm going to have to advance it for you.
Okay. I'll work, um, I'll be on, get a seat, uh...
Hold on, I'm returning, and I'll, it'll be, let's, let's bring that over here.
No, we can't see it. Do we have, do we have this? Because we can't really see it unless we come out there. That's okay, I mean...
I could go grab my laptop and put it up here in the bench, uh...
Man, I don't, I don't have a problem coming out there, I'm not...
Yeah, if, if you guys would mind, I'd actually just come out and sit in the audience, that'd probably be better. I don't think anybody here's going to...
I don't think they'll bite. We'll go go out there, Mr. Kidd, so...
And I'm going to try to make this fairly short. We've all been here, here an hour, and probably some of you are starting to have your stomach growling like mine is, I hope you won't hear it through the microphone. I'm John Gardner, I appreciate your opportunity to be back here, and, uh, we've, um, been working on the natural resources element of the comprehensive plan. This is really just an inventory. We're not really plowing any new ground, to coin a phrase, on this, but just borrowing information from State Department of Natural Resources, Forestry Commission, and the other agencies that are doing far more detailed plans. What we're really trying to do is summarize this, so that it's useful, um, going forward and considering other things down the road, other elements of plan, looking at economic development, looking at zoning, and looking at the impact of all those things on the natural resources, doing advance. We're probably just going to hit the natural resources piece of this, I've started on an element that's required now called resiliency, which is kind of the buzzword for being able to recover from disasters well, and mitigating things like, um, particularly, uh, sea level rise, really important on coastal cities, and that's why the state legislature chose to require that going forward. So for the natural resources element, I've tried to break it into sort of logical, uh, groups, uh, to, to sort of describe the county, and that, that's a photograph I took, uh, at an event at Mr. Wanamaker's property a few months ago, that I thought really captures what a remarkable place you, you do live in here. But grouping these, uh, this review of natural resources, um, into land and water, uh, wildlife and plant life, and then air and minerals, but there really aren't very many issues with the air here. In fact, statewide, um, we've made great strides to having cleaner air in the last two decades, in spite of all the growth, and that's really because of mostly technology, but a few other changes too, and I'm not going to belabor that. Don't have a lot of mineral wealth in the county, you've got some common clay and some sand, and that's about it, as far as I know. So we won't, we won't really address those. The big topic here today has been farmland, and you are, um, in fact, I was surprised in looking at the agricultural census, how productive the farmland here is. There's four hundred and eighty farms, and a little, right at a hundred and forty-eight thousand acres of farmland in 2017, that's the latest agricultural census that's available. There'll be a 2022 census, but probably some of you, if you have been farming, have responded to already, but the data won't be available until 2024, about a year from now. So all the stuff that I'm citing here is from the 2017 census of agriculture. So those farms, about fifty-four percent is cropland, thirty-nine percent is woodland, um, and then, uh, just a small percentage is pasture, three percent, and four percent is just miscellaneous other. So basically, cropland is thirty-one percent of the total land area of this county. Farm acreage actually increased between 2012 and 2017 here by twenty-six percent. So there is some growth in farming, or has been. Now, some of that may go away, is, some, some of it gets converted to solar farms, if it does, but that's, you know, that's the status. Uh, let's go on the next slide. Remarkable amount of productivity, eighty-one million in sales per year from farms in 2017, seventy-three percent of that's from crops, and thirty-seven, and twenty-seven percent, um, from livestock. That puts Calhoun at sixteenth in total farm market value in the state, so, top third of county. So top third of counties, basically. Puts the county fifth in the state in the value of crop production. That's, you're one of the smallest counties in the state. So that's really an interesting information. $59 million worth of crops. 36% of the cropland is in cotton, 21% peanuts, and 15% in corn. Now, that's old data, it may have changed a little bit. I see a lot more sunflowers out there since the, the oil prices have gone up so much. On the livestock side, it's mostly meat chickens, fryers and whatever. 93% of the livestock revenue comes from poultry and eggs. And almost a million birds in the county, 3,600 cows and 4,700 hogs. So interesting to me, anyway, those, those numbers. Another key piece of land resources is forest. 66% of the county is covered in forest. Now, a lot of folks are living on forest land, this productive forest land too. Just wondering about that. There's really not any detail about county production in forest, but in the, the state in 2019, $21 billion of revenue was associated with the forestry industry. It's forestry, forest products, paper, all of that. The South Carolina Forestry Commission has an excellent forest action plan that was adopted, I think, in 2020. Gentlemen back here may know better than I do.
Yes, I'll go add it. Timber is the number one cash crop in the state.
Right.
It's not, it's not, well, the number one agricultural product in the state. It's the third largest industry in the state.
Right. Right, I think I, I may have that in the written report, but couldn't fit anything, everything into the slides here. But that's, that's very good information, good to hear you validate that. So that, that stuff is available online. If you're really interested in it, it's lots of good information. Some of the priorities that pop up out of the forest action plan from State Forestry Commission are main threats to the forest right now are pests, wildfire, and development. One of the things development does is fragments the forest, which can make it harder to manage, has, reduces the overall value for wildlife, biodiversity, and all that other stuff. And partialization, when a large tract through inheritance gets split into smaller ones, it gets harder to manage and things are more likely to fragment. I'll show you some illustrations of that in a minute. Some of the, the priorities for the forestry commission are conserving working forests for the reasons mentioned, lots of value coming out of those working forests. Not just the money, also habitat value and other things if they're managed properly. Protecting forest from harm, and that's all the things listed above, wildfire, pests, and development, and enhancing the public benefit from forest. So they've done some really interesting analysis with geographic information systems. This is something I did that sort of illustrates parts, the fragmentation and partialization. You can kind of see it happening in the map. This map shows the size of parcels of land around the county, with the red ones being the really, the smallest parcels that are two acres or less, and the yellows going up larger, and the dark green is all the places where there aren't any parcels smaller than 40 acres. So that's what's sort of being illustrated here. So you see Fort Mott and sort of that crescent around St. Matthews is where you really got the biggest parcels of land, where land has had the least, been split up the least. Without going on and on, this is a, one of the maps from the forest action plan that shows the forestry commission's assessment of the highest priority forests to protect. One of the things that really pops out here is something that we'll talk about in a minute. I'm gonna take this off so I can walk around a little bit. Is if you look, you kind of see a dark V here. That's the Watery River and the Congry River and then the Santee. And that's an area that Department of Natural Resources has called the Kowasi Basin because it is such an important area for forestry, biodiversity, plant diversity, all that. And jump on here to forest management initiatives that are important. And some of you have been involved a bit in these. One of the priorities that pops out of the forest management plans is to try to begin restoring longleaf pine forest. Only about 3% of the original longleaf pine forest is left on the east coast, in the, in the state that it was in. Pine savannas are important diverse, biodiversity thing that can really enhance the diversity of plants and animals. Another priority for the, the forest plan was protection of bottomland hardwood forests. Right across the river, you've got the largest remaining bottomland hardwood forest in the east coast, on the east coast, in Congry National Park. Early successional forests are very important for habitat and how those are managed. Calhoun's part of an initiative to restore bobwhite quail, which have been hurt by some farming practices, forestry practices, and other things. So those can be ways to do it. I mentioned this Kowasi Basin, it's probably hard to see, it's outlined in yellow here. There's already a lot of protected land between Manchester State Forest, Point Set State Park, Santee Cooper Property, the Congry National Park. And then all these purple spots are various conservation easements that private landowners have, have put in place, both for the tax benefits and the long-term protection of the, the property and habitat. Going really fast, I know, but water resources. The state has eight river basins and they're in process of developing very detailed plans for each one of those basins, working with stakeholders, both agricultural stakeholders, industry, cities, all the big water users. The first one they did was the Edisto River Basin Plan. DNR has done a, historically done a lot of detailed planning for the Edisto River Basin because it is such a special river and river system and ecosystem. Calhoun is split between the Edisto Basin and the Santee Basin, US 176. Sort of runs along the ridgeline that separates those two basins. And they will be developing a Santee River Basin Plan in the next two or three years. A lot of great data in the Edisto Basin Plan. One of the things that pops out of there is that under some scenarios, the demand for water may cause aquifers to drop below, groundwater to drop below top of the aquifer level. And that may make your wells run dry in some cases, but can also damage that groundwater resource permanently. So something that, and that's 40 or 50 years out is where models are showing that. And that's a function of industrial use, residential and, you know, municipal use of water as well as agricultural irrigation. So that's something that, that probably needs to be in the, you know, the priority going forward to look at both conservation and how you manage those groundwater resources here. I'm going next, yeah. Hit wildlife and plant life. There are 82 species in the county that Department of Natural Resources tracks, monitors, you know, the change in the count they're getting of them, as well as health of those, those species. So there's six endangered or threatened or at-risk species in the county, six migratory bird act species covered here. And then 70 other species are really just indicator species of habitat health and conditions. And I'm not going to go through all those 70, but I will hit the endangered ones. It's the short-nosed sturgeon in the Congry, Santee, and Watery Rivers. Red cockaded woodpecker largely is endangered because of habitat loss. That's that longleaf pine savanna is what those birds thrive in. Woodstork is a state endangered bird. It's listed federally as threatened. The populations are recovering, but they are present here. And the tri-colored bat is the other species that's proposed in the federal endanger, or for federal designation, probably is threatened. Bald eagle is state threatened because populations are still not real large here. I was kayaking on the Saluder River this weekend and saw, either saw three of them or saw the same one three times, don't know which, I couldn't identify them that well. And then there's this tiny little guy called Chamberlain's Dwarf Salamander that's also in county and wetlands and is threatened. I'm not going to read off all these, you're probably familiar with these guys. I've never actually seen one of these, I'd love to. It's a painted bonding, but. Really? All right, well, I guess I'll, I'll have to come back. But you know, these are indicators of really special environment and natural resource habitat that you got here. And it's, it's worth protecting to the greatest extent you can that's consistent with all the other things we have to consider. Just some important conservation initiatives right now. Congry Biosphere was designated in 83. And not much was ever done with it. And so there's an effort to focus, more effort on preservation and conservation activities around Congry National Park because it is such a special place. But that also includes parts of Calhoun County. I think we've got participation at Central Midlands on a group that is pursuing this. And it's pretty much voluntary cooperative efforts to just try to make sure we're doing what we can that's reasonable to preserve these special places that are around us. We've got conservation easements that several organizations, notably Congry Land Trust, but you've also got Ducks Unlimited and the USDA Wetlands Reserve Program are, are part of that effort to, where owners do want to put in place conservation easements on their property. And I mentioned this Kowasi Basin Initiative, that's a DNR initiative to try to work with private landowners. 68% of the land is still in public hands and is going to remain there in that basin. But it's been, stewardship activities have been pretty good there. So it's, it's, they're continuing to work with landowners. Last slide. These are just some of the issues that I see coming out of this. And it would talk, that's kind of why so many of you are here today, is that, you know, trying to balance farmland preservation and working forest preservation with property rights and economic development. These are difficult questions. Do have some pressures from solar installations that we've talked about a lot and suburban development. I've been working with county on, for several years now, on doing some things to try to address those pressures on, on both the natural resources and on the communities and concerns from, from folks about development and what the impacts are going to be. Groundwater conservation protection. I mentioned this water model, regional water model at DNR. Under some scenarios, shows some risk of low water levels in the aquifer that we're, a lot of us are drawing water from, from here. And so that's really collaboration with state agencies to do things to protect the aquifer recharge areas and just make sure that there are other things that we can do or being done. And there are a lot of stewardship opportunities here. You know, statewide, forestry, best management practices are being implemented at a very high rate, like 96% or higher on the timber harvests that are occurring. There's a lot of initiative in habitat management improvement. Some of you here, I know, have been working with different folks to try to improve your, the habitat on your own property, whether it's for managing for bobwhite quail, leaving some of those rough edges at the pastures that work really well for a lot of species. And the other, you know, opportunity that comes out of this is, has been talked about a lot is just ecotourism and agritourism as a economic development tool. This is a great place. It's not highly visited, but you know, there are folks doing, you know, what's the movie where the guys go out to the ranch and, you know, get run around? I can't remember, anyway, old movie. Somebody said it? City Slickers, yeah, that's the one. You pay to go to the farm and, you know, plow a mule or something. I don't know if you're going to get anywhere with that, but anyway. There's, well, exactly. And I think, you know, there are lots of opportunities that could potentially be developed here in that direction. That's really for other pieces of the plan, but I just mentioned it. Run through that really quick because I know it's getting late. Be glad to take a couple of questions or any thoughts about what, any overarching goals or themes we ought to look at as, as ideas of protecting and managing and being good stewards of the resources in the county.
I think we should, should also note, just like the other ones, this will be posted on the county's comprehensive plan page. So you can go to the website and see it. The, the first three components are there. Mr. Gardner's actually finalizing the documentation for this. Presentation will be up, and as we get that finished, we'll put up the whole presentation as well.
Yes, sir. What you indicated, you're moving on then from the natural resources chapter onto the resiliency chapter rather than hitting cultural resources next?
Well, we did do a presentation on cultural resources, but it is, that document's done. Worked a lot with the Calhoun History Museum and Archives of History. It just sort of documented the cultural resources of county.
It should be online, I'll double check to make sure, that should already be posted. I believe we sent that to be posted. If it's not, we'll get it posted.
No, no, but yeah, no, I didn't, I did not come to do a presentation on that.
I just, this is probably also covered somewhere else because this was mostly natural resources. But what about industry? You know, Berkeley County, for instance, has just exploded with Volvo, Mercedes, all of those, and the amazing infrastructure that they've all required. And how many people have suddenly just come into that county that was very rural only 15 years ago.
Well, being the economic element, looking at industry opportunity. Yeah, this is tricky in that I can compare with the infrastructure.
Well, we'll cover infrastructure too, but also the land use element is already online. The land use element goes into that, but then beyond that, zoning goes into that a lot too. When we talk about infrastructure, the, you know, we don't have sewer infrastructure, especially in the lower part of the county. You've got a little bit in St. Matthews, but nothing really outside of that. Water infrastructure is something that the county's been working on for years and continues to work on and will continue. We're part of the Lake Marion Regional Water Authority, so that, that will, you know, progress to do that. But take a look at the land use element. You know, we've kind of identified another element of this is the priority investment areas deal with around the municipalities and things like that. But those are in the future elements as they come through.
So I mean, the intent of all of this is to head towards what you're, you're asking about is how you, what, what decisions or what direction do you take to focus your efforts in infrastructure and economic development and investment to make sure that you get the best stake of the buck? So that's, that's what the latter part of the plan really focuses on. So a lot of these early elements are just focusing on the things that you want to make sure you're protected and you're aware of as you're making those other decisions down there.
Are there any projections for population growth over the next 10 to 15 years?
They're pretty flat for Calhoun, both in terms of what the state agencies are putting out and what the trends are. And, you know, you drive around, you do see some new houses popping up. What you don't see is, is the fact that household size is steadily going down. Populations aging, if you have kids in the house. And, you know, but so there's a, even though you're adding homes, you may still be losing population because of shrinking household size and aging population.
And that, that element's also online. We've got on the comprehensive plan page, the population housing element. Quite a bit of data actually available, median age. All that information is available and kind of consolidated there in that report.
I think the hardest part of this for me is trying to figure out how to sort of condense a whole lot of information and run through a funnel and come out with something that's fairly easy to understand. And, you know, people don't do a lot of reading. I try not to use a lot of wording reports because it's a waste of time anymore. If you can't do it with pictures and graphs and charts and tables, it's probably not going to get communicated anymore. anymore. Anybody have any thoughts about any really important issues or goals we'll be aware of going forward? I'd like to ask that. I'll just probably make some up if y'all come up with one.
Well, we thank everybody for coming. As usual, we'll continue to have these meetings. You know, check in on the website, look at the information there if you would. There is a lot of good information there, and we'll continue to update it as we move forward on this. So we thank you for coming.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
We need, we got.
Can we get a motion for adjournment, guys? Mr. Kit, can we get a motion for adjournment?
My favorite people say.
We get a motion for adjournment, Mr. Kit.
Mr. Howard, can we get a second?
We got a second for adjournment.
Thank you.